All right, so with roll call. Julie?
Julie Byers, present.
Lori?
Laura Schiffern, present.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, present.
And Lance McNally, present. So we have four out of the five members. I don't have any additions or deletions to the agenda. As usual, Beth did a fantastic job on the minutes of January the 24th. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes or any discussion on those minutes? Julie, do you have any comments on that?
No comments.
Lori?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as sent to us for January 24th, 2022.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that, Lance.
How do you vote, Julie?
Julie Byers, yes.
Lori?
Laura Schiffern, yes.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
And Lance McNally, yes. And so I just saw that Ian had joined, and is that you, Ian?
Yes. Just got back from work kind of late.
That's okay. And I may need your help again, Adam. So since Ian is our associate member, is it just at the discretion of the chair to appoint him as a voting member? Or do we have to vote on that?
It's at the discretion of the chair.
All right, that's what I thought, but it's been so long since I've done this that I just wanted to make sure. So for tonight's meeting, since Carol could not join us, Ian, our associate member, is here. And I would like to have Ian appointed as a voting member for tonight's meeting so that we have a full board of five. Okay, we just approved the minutes. Gosh, let's see. Gosh, we have four minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Adam, how this works when we have a public hearing on Zoom and a participant has not stated who they are? Don't you have to know everyone who's in a public hearing, is my question?
I'm going to defer to Adam on that since he's here.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So there's no requirement in the law that you be aware of all those who were present at a public hearing. It's common practice amongst municipal boards, zoning boards, planning boards, and so forth, to provide some form of sign-in sheet to keep accurate records as to maybe who was in attendance. That's particularly important, quite frankly, to those attendants if they want to establish that they participated in the process or from the perspective of the board, it can assist in defending against later allegations, maybe that somebody didn't have notice. Certainly, that's a harder rule to enforce these days with these remote formats like Zoom formats. I certainly support boards that request that individuals who are participating through Zoom identify themselves. But I've had circumstances where individuals refuse to do so. And, you know, in those instances, I don't typically advise my boards to remove them from the meeting because then you have another host of problems because you've now refused somebody access to an open public meeting.
Okay, Cindy, whoever's logged in as Cindy, do you care to identify yourself or not? You're muted. Okay, Lori, does that address your question?
Yes, thank you, Adam. So also, that would mean that that person can't participate because you can't call on them, right?
So certainly, the expectation would be that if someone's going to speak during a public hearing, they need to identify themselves. So if the individual identified as Cindy wishes to participate later, then at the time that she participates or he participates, you would ask that individual to identify themselves and their property address before they provide public input.
Thank you for the clarification.
It's also quite possible in these sorts of formats that individuals that are joining through Zoom simply don't understand how to unmute themselves or are not familiar with the functionality of the program. So, you know, it's quite possible that Cindy is attempting to say that she's here or he's here and simply can't, so.
Chairman McNally, do you know who Mark's iPad is? Could you ask who Mark is?
Mark, do you care to identify yourself?
Hi.
Yes, Mark. Mark, you went off mute there for a second. Do you care to identify yourself?
Yes, this is Mark and Diane Seifer, 187 North End Road, Lot Number One, Campbell Farm subdivision.
Okay, thank you so much, Mark.
You're very welcome.
Okay, with that, thank you, Lori, because you got us right at 6:45. So I didn't have to try to squeeze something in there to fill some time. So at this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Campbell Farm, 187 and 199. And at first, even though we did this, let's go over it again. I would like each board member to identify themselves, starting with Julie.
Julie Byers, present.
Lori?
Laura Schiffern, present.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, present.
Ian?
Ian, present.
And Lance McNally, present. With that, and hold on, I'm not as efficient here in a virtual world. But I would like to proceed with announcing everyone that we have a virtual sign-in sheet going on, and Beth is going to capture, was currently logged on to the virtual session. And I would like to read the legal notice. In accordance with MGL Chapter 48 and the Townsend Planning Board Rules and Regulations, Article 2, Subdivision Control, 17513, Definitive Subdivision, Townsend's, Townsend General Bylaw and Planning Board Rules and Regulations, the Planning Board will hold a remote public hearing on Monday, February 14th at 6:45 p.m. on an application by Townsend Hill Realty Trust requesting a modification and slash or waiver to a condition contained in the Planning Board Decision Application for Approval of Definitive Plan Campbell Farm, 187 and 99 North End Road dated December 9th, 2019. Identified as 6B4, which states, "The applicant shall provide proof of recording of a conservation restriction on parcel C prior to receiving occupancy permits." Book 75754, H260. "The project is currently under construction and is a six-lot definitive subdivision slash open space preservation development located off North End Road, assessor's map 46, blocks 2, 3, lots 026789. Interested parties may join the remote-only public hearing at the following Zoom meeting." All right, I'm not going to read the HTTP URL, you know, with the meeting ID and the passcode. The applicants, the applications are available for view at the land use and the town clerk's office at 272 Main Street. Digital copies available on request to Beth Vaxton at TownsendMass.gov. Interested parties are encouraged to attend sincerely, Lance J. McNally. All right. So let me look at you or look towards you to Dana, if you want to sort of present what you're looking for.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What we're looking for is to be able to allow occupancy permits to be issued on the three lots that you mentioned that were sold to third parties that are unrelated to the trust. We're not looking for anything for the two lots that are being retained by myself and one other trustee. We're just trying to get these occupancy permits issued because, quite honestly, we thought we were in a different place when we sold these lots. And we had no idea that we would be coming up against the timeline that we are right now. And we just don't want to hurt the people that purchased those lots independently.
Okay. Thank you, Dana. So Mike, are you on your iPhone or are you able to read the mandatory referral comments?
I'm actually driving back still. I'm on my iPhone currently. I'm hoping to get to my desk in a couple of minutes to be on the computer.
All right, well, we certainly do not want you reading any mandatory referrals while you are driving. So Beth, could you please read the mandatory referrals? You're on mute, Beth.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the first one we have is from the Conservation Commission. The comment made was strongly suggest completion of stormwater infrastructure. The fire pond needs to be completed and functional prior to issuance of occupancy permits. The zoning board of appeals. There should be no change in the conditions of the Campbell Farm OSPD definitive subdivision approval. Normal process as delineated in the conditions of approval should be followed. That was by unanimous vote of the VBA at their meeting on February 2nd, 2022. The building commissioner. The concern I have about amending the OSPD permit to allow occupancy in three out of five homes in the subdivision is that it weakens the town's leverage to ensure conservation restriction is recorded. If the town allows occupancy of these three lots, it would be difficult, and in my opinion, highly unlikely that the courts would be inclined to act to remove the residence in the event that the CR does not materialize and I am forced to revoke occupancy. If the planning board chooses to amend this permit, I would suggest allowing full occupancy of these three lots as opposed to temporary occupancy, comma, with the understanding that building permits will be withheld indefinitely unless and until the CR is recorded or the town receives an additional guarantee of performance, monetary or otherwise, from the applicants as collateral to ensure that the conservation restriction moves forward. Please keep in mind, when I made the decision to issue building permits for two lots, it was done at the owner's risk after careful consideration by myself, the Board of Selectmen and Town Council. Had the decision been made to withhold building permits until the conservation restriction was recorded, we wouldn't have issued building permits for any of these parcels. The owners were aware of that, and I would consider that to be a show of good faith by the town. I'm also aware of the extenuating circumstance surrounding this project, most of which occurred before my employment. One of these lots was sold to a buyer who has no relation or connection whatsoever to the project or its trustees. Thankfully, the lot remains undeveloped, although I'm sure the owners are anxious to begin building their home. Also, after speaking with Acting Fire Chief Gary Shepherd, he is in favor of issuing occupancy to these homes before the completion of the fire pond apparatus and gave me permission to speak to that on his behalf. Signed Eric Chartrand, February 9th. The fire department. The comment from the fire department is, "Since the fire pond is in the final stages of completion by the contractors, we see no reason, from a public safety view, to hold up occupancy of the single-family homes." Signed on February 10th. The Board of Selectmen, this comment was submitted individually by selectwoman Cal. The comment is, "As the CR for Campbell Farm is now quote, 'approved for local signatures,' unquote, once the grantor and grantee have signed, this may be put on the Board of Selectmen's agenda. We anticipate this to be the March 1st, 2022 agenda, in parentheses, the next available, unparentheses. Consequently, no modification to the planning board decision is necessary." Signed Veronica Cal individually, today's date. And in parentheses, "This referral notice is scheduled for ratification and discussion by vote on the Board of Selectmen's February 15th Agenda 2022." The Board of Health returned no comment, and the Highway Department returned no comment. And that's everything.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions on the mandatory referrals from anyone? Okay, just to provide everyone with an update that you probably gathered from the mandatory referrals, but Mike did an excellent job of explaining the CR process to us. So the
Oh, he's froze. Uh-oh, he's got to go restart the router.
Hey, Beth, just so you know, I was able to make the switch without signing off at all.
Oh, very good. Thank you. So Lori, I imagine you might want to be ready to stand by.
I cannot speak his words.
I don't see him reconnecting. I don't see him reconnecting yet, so I don't know how.
Did you text him?
No, I'll do that right now. I'm sure he was frantically trying to reconnect, but.
Hello?
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, my internet went down.
Okay, great, great to have you back. We can hear you.
Okay, good, I'm sorry about that. I don't know where I cut off, but I was just giving everyone an update that we received the conservation restriction on Friday for local signatures. I've spoken with Jessica, and she's going to have getting them, hopefully this week, as her top priority. And I assume Dana, that you will be signing the CR? Lance to Dana, are you planning to sign the CR?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, okay. Yes, I am planning on signing the CR.
Okay, and everything, and I think you heard the referral from selectman Cal. So she's putting that on the agenda for the selectmen's meeting on March 1st. So it looks like the CR is positioned well to be approved. But with that, any, with that, do I have any questions or comments from other board members?
So the CR has gone through the state process? Is that what that means at this point?
I will, let me answer this, and Mike, can you correct me? You have more experience than I am. But it's through the process where it has been reviewed and approved by the state, and it's been through their legal review. And so they're sending it back to us for our approval of it at the conservation, at the applicant's part, which is Dana, and the selectmen's. And then it will then be signed by the state. So I would characterize as through the difficult and time-consuming part. Would you agree with that, Mike? Mike Crowley?
Sorry, I wasn't sure if that was for me or other Mike.
Okay, for you, Mike.
Yes, I believe that it's come back from the state at this point. So now it's just the point where we make sure that everyone in town and the applicant have approved the process. And it sounds like everybody's gotten at least some eyes on it at this point. So it shouldn't hopefully have any more issues coming up down the line. I don't anticipate any, but, you know, I'm going to knock on some wood while I say that.
Yeah, I agree with your characterization 100%. In other words, this is not the first time that everyone's been looking at this. I can't, you know, I'm on a phone, so I can't see if people are raising their hands or what have you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Lori?
For Adam. So if, I don't, I haven't read the document, and I'm sure the Board of Selectmen know what they're doing. But there's still, so the certificate of occupancies will be issued for the three lots that they sold. But are those people signing the CR as well? Will they stand behind the CR? Because the two remaining, if they're signed by, is it just Dana that's going to sign? Or they sign for a corporation, and if the corporation goes defunct, who is going to be obligated on the CR? That's my question.
Let me answer, let me answer the first part of that question. So the applicant for the conservation restriction is Townsend Realty, Townsend Hill Realty Trust. And so as part of our definitive subdivision decision, we basically had the condition that no occupancy permits would be issued until there was a CR. So assuming that the CR that we currently received on Friday is approved, then occupancy permits can be issued. Or should the board tonight basically, should the board vote to approve the amendment? And the amendment was to basically provide occupancy permits for three lots prior to a CR. And I'll let Adam correct me.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's correct. The condition of your original approval, as is recited in tonight's agenda, is that no certificate of occupancy would issue until such time as the board was provided with proof of recording of the conservation restriction on parcel C. My understanding is that the applicant is simply requesting the elimination of that condition so as to allow the building commissioner to issue certificates of occupancy for these three lots prior to the recording of the conservation restriction with a certain understanding that that conservation restriction is imminent, let's say. I don't want to speak to, you know, what could go wrong or what certainty there is. I mean, it's still in process, but I think it's safe to say that it's close. To your second question, Lori, the running of the burden of the conservation restriction is in perpetuity with the premises. So there's a specific provision in the standard form conservation restriction, and it is in the current CR for the Campbell Farm project that says that, and I'm just going to quote it because I've got it in front of me, "The burdens of this conservation restriction shall run with the premises in perpetuity and shall be enforceable against the grantor and the successors and assigns of the grantor holding any interest in the premises." So you can, you can be guaranteed as you possibly can be in terms of the legal which can be structured, that this is a, this is a restriction that runs in perpetuity, and it's a restriction that initially is particular to the signer or the grantor and will, because it runs with the land, will also be binding upon any successor or assign that may in the future acquire an interest in the premises.
I think that answered my question, that we don't have to worry about this not being done, that there will always be someone responsible for this CR on any of those lots. Or did I?
So I want to be clear about the premises, and certainly the applicant can speak to this even better than I can. But there's some confusion here where there's references to any of these lots, and then there's references to parcel A, B, C, and so forth. So you know better than I do, because I, and even later than some of you did, that this parcel, this project, was divided into a number of parcels that were identified by letter A, B, C. And then also, of course, house lots, building lots. The conservation restriction is not on building lots. The conservation restriction is on an area that is required to be open space per the subdivision decision as well as the accompanying OSPD special permit. So that's why, when you asked the question earlier and Lance answered it, who's signing the conservation restriction? The answer was that the Townsend Hill Realty Trust, I presume Dana Roberts is the trustee, is signing the document because that's the entity that owns the parcel that will be subject to the conservation restriction. The CR isn't going to cover individual building lots, including these three lots that we're asking now be permitted to obtain certificates of occupancy. And so the owners of those lots have no interest in the CR. They won't be grantors of the CR. They won't enforce the CR. The entity that will hold the CR or that is granting the CR will be the Townsend Hill Realty Trust. And the Conservation Commission is the holder of the restriction that is being granted by the trust.
So it's only the trust that's responsible for this, and it's only on one parcel of the subdivision. So all the other lots or owners will have no responsibility to this CR.
Let me, let me just, to be precise, Lori. So the conservation restriction is, as Adam said, and it's actually on two parcels. It's on parcel D2, which is 27.9 acres, and parcel C, which is 22.81 acres. So it's actually on two parcels as opposed to just one parcel.
And I would add to that, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that, you know, when we talk about who's responsible. So the concept of a conservation restriction is that the owner of record of the premises conveys the restriction to a third party. Typically, that third party is a conservation commission. It can be a land conservation trust. And that third party, by virtue of holding the restriction, has the ability to enforce whatever those restrictions within the actual CR itself are. So if there is a restriction that says you can't cut trees, then the holder of the restriction, the land conservation trust, or in this case, the conservation commission, would have the authority to enforce that restriction. If somebody, whether it be the underlying owner of the land, in this case, the trust, or somebody that trespasses onto the land, if somebody was caught cutting trees and the CR said you can't cut trees, the holder of the CR, the commission, would have the authority to enforce that. And same thing with every restriction. So as I look through this particular conservation restriction, there are provisions that, there are restrictions, a whole list of what are called prohibited acts and uses that address mining, excavating, dredging, placing, filling, storing, and dumping of soil, refuse, trash, vehicle bodies, parts, rubbish, debris, cutting or removing of, or otherwise trash, vehicle bodies, parts, rubbish, debris, uh, cutting or removing of, or otherwise destroying of trees, grasses or vegetation. And there's a whole list. It's about a page and a half long. And then there's some reserved rights that the grantor, the owner of the premises, reserves to him or herself, or in this case, itself, the trust. So when we talk about the holder of the restriction, it's not going to be the trust that holds the restriction. The trust already owns the land. It's the Conservation Commission that holds the restriction and has the enforcement right under the conservation restriction to ensure that what it is acquiring, i.e. the restriction, stays in full force and effect and that neither the underlying landowner nor anybody else does anything that would be contradictory to the prohibitions that are found within that restriction.
Okay, I just wanted this all explained on tape and it'll be in the minutes because it's a lot to absorb and um, basically everything will be enforced by the Conservation Commission.
That's right. And I, I, I just want to, I want to be sure that one thing is understood just for purposes of, to some extent, keeping the board on track tonight. The issue that's before the planning board tonight is very simple. It's a question of whether or not you wish to waive or eliminate this condition in your original approval. And that condition tied the timing of the conservation restriction to the issuance of certificates of occupancy. So nothing you're, you're doing tonight, nothing you're being asked to do, nothing you should be doing, uh, consistent with the, the way in which the meeting has been noticed, will affect the type of conservation restriction, the enforceability of the restriction, the holder of the restriction. All that is determined either by your original decision or just by the provisions of state statute governing conservation restrictions and the process that's already unfolded in large part in our, in our back and forth with the state. So certainly I'm happy to entertain your, your questions, Lori, and I think that they're, they're important questions and we should all understand how the, the conservation restriction functions. But nothing you'd be doing tonight would alter the way that that CR functions. You're not being asked to release the CR or modify the CR. You're simply being asked to eliminate something that, that relates to the timing of when that CR would be recorded with the registry of deeds.
I appreciate your time and taking to answer my question.
Can I ask a question as well?
Yes, Bill.
I was, um, I'm curious, um, has the open space or is it planning to, is it going to be conveyed to, to a third party or is it all going to belong to this Townsend Hill Realty Trust?
The open space was conveyed to Fish and Wildlife.
Oh, okay. So, all right. So does Fish and Wildlife have to be a party to the conservation restriction in that case?
The, well, so, 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 um, this is really complicated because, um, so currently on a August the 10th of 2020, um, amendment to the OSPD and the definitive subdivision, there was a partial parcel D1 that is 29.1 acres that was conveyed to Fish and Wildlife. Since Fish and Wildlife was viewed as a municipality, uh, there is no, there was no requirement for Fish and Wildlife to have a CR.
Okay.
There's two parcels, one identified as D2, which is 27.9 acres and parcel C, which is 22.81 acres that, um, are owned by Townsend Hill Realty Trust. And both of those parcels are subject to a CR.
Okay.
So Dana, um, I assume that, um, I stated that correctly?
You, you did. The, the 29.1 acres was what is required under the OSPD. The additional land being, um, is being put in a CR basically to keep it open.
Okay, do I have any? Yeah, yes, Bill.
I'm sorry. The only issue with that is you're, you know, you're going to be taxed twice on that, uh, open space.
No, no, we, yeah, we, we understand that. I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but we, but we, we, we actually produce maple syrup. So we'll continue to farm the property, use it for, for our maple syrup production. That, that's, that's why I was okay with it that way, but at least we know it's not going to be built on this way.
I see, okay. Well, at this point, I think with the, with the conservation restriction so close, uh, it seems to me, uh, uh, it always makes me nervous to, uh, to abandon, um, the town's leverage over getting those things filed. So I, I would think it's a, it's moot to, to change the conditions at this point. Not necessary.
Right, thanks, Bill. Do I have any other, um, questions or comments from board members?
Oh, Lance, are you taking any more questions from the public? Jones Savoy here.
Yeah, if you can just hold, join, okay?
Yep.
The answer is yes, I'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Anything, anything else from the board members? Julie, are you good?
Yes, Lance.
Lori?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mike?
I'm good, Lance, thanks.
All right, Ian?
I'm good.
Okay, um, Beth, have you received any, um, correspondence from any abutters or concerned citizens?
No.
Okay, so we don't need to read any written correspondence there. Okay, um, back to you, Jo, uh, Joan.
Oh, thank you, Joan Savoy Adams wrote, um, please for the record, is the fire pond functional as of today? Thank you.
Um, I'm going to, um, Joan, basically say, I don't know. And that, um, I believe that only the, um, fire chief is, thinks the final say on whether or not the fire pond is ready. In other words, I don't have the competence to, to say whether or not it's complete.
Okay, can Mr. Roberts comment?
Is it okay for me to comment? Mr. Chairman? Yeah. Yeah. Jessica Consalvo, um, I, I was told, I actually visited the property today to ensure that the work was completed. I know that she's not the final say, but she told EKC Development that, um, that it appeared to be completed. So I don't know if that helps you, Joan. I know that, um, the building commissioner, Eric Charkin, also stated that we did all the work in accord to the plans, but I, but I, I don't know that the fire chief has signed off on that.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, Jessica did not notify the Concom that she thought it was completed. That's why I asked. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I did talk to, I did talk to Jessica, but at the same time, um, you know, I think that it, it needs, um, you know, the fire chief's approval. I'm certainly not, uh, you know, competent enough to, to say whether or not it's done or not. All right, anything else, Joan?
Thank you, no.
Okay, um, so Dana, how would you like to proceed? Or how would you like the board to see, to proceed?
You know, um, Mr. Chairman, I would still appreciate it if I could vote. And the reason for that is because one, one of the people who purchased the, the land, they are being displaced tomorrow. So if, I understand how close we are and the reason why I ran these two things parallel with both the CR and coming back to the planning board was because we knew that there was somebody who could be displaced out of their home that they were moving out of because they were expecting to move into this property. I, I understand that timing may end up being very similar. Um, I was hoping that to get out of this, whether or not, um, the building commissioner is allowed to issue a temporary occupancy for those people because particularly the people on Lot 5, like I said, they're, they're going to be displaced tomorrow. So that's why I ran this parallel.
Okay, but whether or not the building commissioner can issue a, okay. Adam, do you have any advice for the board?
Mr. Chairman, so I, I have a, I guess somewhat of a point of order. Um, and maybe it's just my, um, my confusion in reviewing the materials, but I, I quite frankly didn't notice it until I looked at tonight's agenda in preparation for, for logging on, um, and, and read it carefully. So I see on the agenda that, uh, the references to a public hearing for Townsend Hill Realty Trust, request for a modification and/or waiver to a condition contained in the planning board quote unquote decision, application for approval of definitive plan Campbell Farm 187 and 199 North End Road. And it refers to a, a date of December 9th of 2019 and refers to condition, uh, Roman numeral six, point B, point four. And that's the, the condition that has been, been spoken of earlier tonight that, that requires, uh, proof of recording of the CR prior to occupancy permits. So certainly that is properly before the board tonight. Uh, that's something the board can, can choose to vote on, um, if it believes it has the information that it needs to do so and would require a, a simple majority vote. It's a, it's a subdivision plan amendment. But my recollection, and again, I haven't been involved start to finish in this project, but I, I have been somewhat involved, um, in, in, in the dealings with the project since it was originally before the board. And my understanding is that in addition to issuing a definitive subdivision approval, your board issued an OSPD open space preservation development special permit, which is, um, although it's much like a subdivision approval, because that's really what it is partly authorizing, the subdivision of land into house lots, it's also a special permit under chapter 40A, section nine. It's something that is referenced in your zoning bylaw as opposed to in your subdivision rules and regulations. And, uh, that was a separate approval that was issued for this project and of course is subject to a different process in terms of notice, public hearing, and certainly in terms of quantum of vote. It requires a super majority vote as opposed to a, a simple majority vote. So I raise all of this because I'm just a bit concerned as I look at the agenda and I, I've seen the way that the discussion is progressing. Have we captured everything here? So if you choose to move forward and amend tonight, and I'm not presuming that you will, but if you, if you vote and either amend or deny an amendment of this particular condition in the definitive subdivision approval from back in 2019, has that also captured any changes necessary to the special permit? Maybe there are no changes necessary to the special permit. I, I guess I don't have that permit before me, but if the special permit also required or tied the issuance of certificates of occupancy, um, to, to the CR being recorded, then that would need to be amended as well. And maybe the applicant can speak to that. It could be that I'm missing something or, or misremembering something.
Uh, let me, let me address that, Adam. The, um, OSPD had a condition in it that no building permits would be issued until the CR was recorded.
Okay, and is that, and, and again, seeking to kind of refresh my recollection, is that the condition that was interpreted by the building commissioner to, um, to, to be waived because it was inconsistent with the requirement in, um, the subdivision approval?
I, I cannot speak to that, Adam. I do not know.
Yeah, nor, nor can I.
But that condition does exist, um, in the OSPD decision.
Okay, so I mean, I guess ultimately through you, Mr. Chairman, it's really the applicant's risk. I just, I kind of bring it to the attention of the board tonight because you're, you're taking a single vote tonight and that single vote is on, uh, what's been requested by the applicant, which is an amendment to the definitive subdivision approval and nothing more. So that's fine. You can proceed to vote if you're prepared to do so. But, uh, it's the applicant's risk if it doesn't have all of its permits amended appropriately that it, it can't proceed to the next step in the process, which would be to, um, to, to seek the issuance of a CO from the building commissioner. Also, you know, certainly nothing your board can do can dictate to the building commissioner, you know, what, what he does or doesn't do. So if he were, if you were to vote to amend this condition tonight, he could still determine, um, either that he is going to await, uh, passage of the appeal period before he issues certificates of occupancy. He could determine that there are other things that might prevent the issuance of a CO for these residences. Again, I just want to be very clear that, you know, your, your jurisdiction as a planning board is somewhat limited. The, the, the very simple question in some respects that's before you tonight is, are you comfortable waiving or eliminating this condition that requires recording of the CR prior to the issuance of these three certificates of occupancy? If you're comfortable with that, then you could vote to amend. And again, it requires a simple majority vote. If you're uncomfortable with that, you would vote, uh, you would vote not to amend. Um, and then the applicant, of course, would have its appellate rights to, to challenge that if it, if it chooses to do so.
Yes, and, um, and, um, I just, I just wanted to reiterate what you, what you were saying, Adam, to Dana, that, um, the process that, um, we go through is that once we have a decision filed with the town clerk, which is, um, has to be done within 14 days of closing a public hearing, um, if there's a 20-day appeal period. So, um, the building commissioner may decide not to issue any occupancy permits during that appeal period. I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I, I, some of the information that I get from the different people that I talk to within the town and different departments has been a little inconsistent. And what I was, what I was actually told was the building inspector, um, or the building commissioner, um, would issue temporary occupancy for those people if the town agreed that that was okay. So I, I guess I thought that that would be the planning board, but who would that be?
That's the building commissioner and if I recall, um, and we can have Beth reread it, um, his mandatory referral to us basically stated that he was not in favor of issuing any temporary occupancy permits.
Sure, and that, and I understand that, but he gave it to me in writing today that he would. So, um, I could read.
I'm sorry, but I can't, I can't as, uh, I mean, as the planning board, I can't reconcile that. I mean, we don't, we don't control the building commissioner.
No, and, and I understand that. I guess I'm just trying to, his comment was, if the, if the town is okay with me issuing it, then I will issue the temporary permit. So who would it be that we're, he's talking about, we're talking about the town.
Lance?
Yeah.
Was, does Veronica's, does the Board of Selectmen's memo that, um, oh God, I'm drawing a blank here. Beth, uh, that Beth read? Does that take us out of the equation? It was going to be up to them?
The, um, I mean, correct me if I misspeak, Adam, but my understanding on the mandatory referral that was submitted individually by Ms. Kell basically stated that, um, she was not in favor of granting the, um, waiver and that she plans to take up the, um, signature of the conservation restriction, um, providing that conservation in the applicant's sign. So the, the select, her comment was only with regards to the amendment proposed by the applicant and then the CR process. And if you wish, we can reread it.
I'd be happy to do that. I have it if you'd like.
Would you like it reread, Lori?
Yeah, do you want to just do that? I, I'm not sure that I'm the only one that's getting ahead in here.
Oh, no.
But, um, you would do that? And then I have another question for Adam regarding any vote, okay?
Okay, um, so Beth, why don't you please reread that?
Okay, yes. Um, Board of Selectmen's, the referral comment, um, quote, "As the CR for Campbell Farm is now, quote, 'approved for local signatures,' unquote, once the grantor and grantee have signed, this may be put on the Board of Selectmen's agenda. We anticipate this to be on the March 1st, 2022 agenda, which is the next available." Consequently, no modification to the planning board decision is necessary. And then signed Veronica Kell individually. And then below in parentheses, uh, this referral notice. in parentheses, "This referral notice for ratification and discussion and vote will be on the Board of Selectmen's agenda on February 15, 2022," which is tomorrow.
Okay, so to Adam, the notice on the public hearing is for us to amend the original condition, or do the waiver to the original condition. Are, I'm just speaking now, I'm not saying in favor, not in favor, whatever. Are we allowed to make a condition only for those, on that one lot, for those people who are going to be displaced tomorrow? I'm not sure of the ramifications of that, so I'm answering the question.
Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
So Lori, yes, the short answer is yes. You have, you know, complete authority when an application is presented to you or a modification request is presented to you to reasonably condition any approval you might issue. So if you were so inclined to vote as a board to allow for elimination of this condition, you could place conditions on that elimination, eliminated, provided however, that it's only with respect to the one lot as opposed to three lots, two lots as opposed to three lots. So you would have that authority.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from any of the other members? And Adam, the vote on the definitive subdivision is a simple majority. It's not a super majority, correct?
That's correct.
All right, just one comment from the chair is, you know, the, I think it's very important, since we originally wanted a CR in place, that, you know, we keep the leverage that we can. I do not know if the building inspector will or will not issue any occupancy permits based on anything that we do, just because of the 20-day appeal period. So, and that's something that we, the planning board, do not control. So is there anyone that is interested in making a motion to approve or disapprove the amendment that is before
Lance?
Come on, someone.
Okay. I'm really struggling with this because I don't want to set precedent. I'll make, I'll make a motion, grant a waiver for the one lot in question of the persons that may be displaced. And I don't know how to word this, Adam, and I don't want this to be precedent setting. I want the conditions to be met as they were originally agreed to by the trust and the planning board. So if Adam could help me out here on what we can do, I'm happy to do that. And if there's a second, we can vote on it. And if not, I guess we wait for the Board of Selectmen.
You know, and I think the motion needs to be in a form where we motioned to have Beth draft a decision that we have to review. Or Adam, do you think that we can just, since it's fairly simple, just vote on it before Beth officially writes the decision?
Well, Mr. Chair, that's really up to you. I mean, part of the challenge here with any application that is before you, when part of the justification for the application is, you know, the urgency of a matter, somebody being displaced, for example, as soon as tomorrow, is that, you know, municipal boards don't typically work that quickly. So my experience working with most boards, including your board, is that you conduct a public hearing, you typically wouldn't even close that public hearing. If you were prepared to render a decision, you would, you would vote to authorize an approval or a denial, and then you would direct either counsel or the chairperson or Beth to draft that approval or denial for review at your next meeting. You would then close the public hearing at your next meeting and vote it, and then you'd have 14 days to file it with the town clerk, and then there'd be a 20-day appeal period. So realistically, it's, you know, it's like 45 to 60 days from the opening of a hearing before a decision, you know, becomes final appeal period passed and so forth. So it can certainly be done more quickly than that. There are boards with simpler matters that will take more prompt action. So I leave it to your discretion as a board. You know, this is not terribly complicated, so you could, you could structure this in such a way that without seeing a written decision, you voted. But you need to be very clear about what you expect the decision to say if you're not going to have it in front of you in black and white.
Yeah. Yeah, I personally, and I, let me just say one other thing to Dana, just based on my own personal experience. When we moved to Townsend, and we had all of our belongings in the Mayflower truck or whatever, the, we were allowed to move our belongings into the home, even though that we had, did not have an occupancy permit and had not been able to close on our loan. But we were not allowed to stay in the house. So that was our own, you know, my own personal experience. I don't know if that helps your, the one person that's about to be displaced.
Hey, Lance?
Yes?
It's called, it's called a use permit. It's very, very common. I did forget to ask this question. When was the anticipated closing date of this lot that is supposed to try and get this occupancy permit for tomorrow?
I'm sorry, Mike, are you asking when they're buying, when they, when they were supposed to buy the lot, or are you asking?
Yeah, yeah. It sounds like you had some delays and everything like that. So I'm trying to figure out when the initial closing date was.
April, April of this past year, April 2020, is when they bought the lot. There's something, there's something that everybody here doesn't understand. In December of 20, yeah, in December of 2020, and I'm sorry, I missedpoke, it was April of 21 that they bought the lot. In December of 2020, the Conservation Commission approved this conservation restriction. And then it sat with the town for nine months before it got active again because of a lot of complications going on in the town. When we sold these folks their land in April of 2021, we had no idea. We thought we had an approved conservation restriction. So the urgency here wasn't something that we just kind of created. This is something I've worked really hard with the town to try to, to try to avoid all of this. This is kind of a last, you know, a last ditch effort here because.
So Dana, I don't, I don't know. Joan, are you still on?
I'm here. I'm here.
Is what Dana's saying correct? My understanding was that we have never, ever received a CR until just recently that was approved by the state for local signatures.
That, that's correct.
Okay, so the, so the CR has never, ever, until last Friday, been approved by the state?
Correct. The EEA, which is the EEA, yes, there were, there were, there were many, many delays for many different reasons. I won't go into them, but this, this is the first time they've, they've said we're good to go.
Lance, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to say that the state had, had approved it. We had worked with the state. I mean, there were many, many different reasons why it got delayed. People, either people leaving their jobs or boards getting, you know, turned over or whatever. When, when we actually got the signatures from the Conservation Commission back in 2020, we actually thought we were approved. I'm not, I'm not trying to make any excuses here. I'm not trying to say that was anything different.
Okay, well, but the process, the process is that it's got to go through the state, and until it goes through the state, it means nothing.
No, I understand that. But what the person we were working with at the state at that time actually said, you have the signatures from your town. I mean, I've got all the emails. I'm not.
Yeah, but I'm just, I'm just stating that we've never, ever had a CR that has gone through legal review from the state until just recently.
No, that is correct. I'm not, I'm not disputing.
All right, so let's, I don't think it's important to go through this, but I think what, Mike, did you get your question answered? I mean, have the owners of the lot that we're talking about closed on their house from a mortgage standpoint?
I have, I have absolutely no idea. Well, first of all, they couldn't close on the lot if they can't, if they can't transfer the property and get occupancy. So they, so they own the lot, all right? The lot is sold. The, the house, I have no idea if they've gotten their, their burn financing, which I doubt they have, because they can't close on the mortgage until this issue is cleared up.
Okay, Mike, did that answer?
They need that, yeah, they need that certificate of occupancy to close the mortgage. So that answers my question. Yeah.
Okay.
And then it would be between them and whoever built the home for them to allow them, I guess, permission to at least store their furniture in there. And of course, they'd have to have insurance on it. But I can see no closing without a certificate of occupancy for sure. But thanks for the reminder, Lance, because we've seen that quite a bit in our industry, where the furniture gets in before the, the family does.
Yeah, and for my, just for me personally, it was just the relief that I didn't have to absorb the cost of having it put in temporary storage and what have you.
I'm, well, my motion was not seconded anyway, so that's dead.
Pardon?
My motion was not seconded, so my, it's, it's not there. It's not on the table.
All right. All right, so do I have a motion to, gosh, can I have a motion to basically have someone say what we should do with this proposed amendment? We want someone to make a motion to approve it or disapprove it, or, you know, not accept it? Yes?
If I could just make a suggestion, I would recommend, I would recommend that regardless of where the board's preferences might lie, that the motion be made in the affirmative. That's how motions should typically be made. You don't want a motion to deny, and then, you know, the motion to deny is two in favor and three oppose. Is that then an approval in reverse? So the motion should always be made in the positive. And then even if you don't want to, even if you want to vote against it, you can still make the motion or second the motion and then vote against the motion. And that eventually, that essentially results in a defeat of the motion, and it's a denial of the, of the relief that's requested.
Okay, yeah. Double negatives aren't always a good thing to do. I agree. All right, so.
I'll try to make a.
Why don't I, okay, go ahead, Lori. Thank you.
I make a motion to grant the request for modification of a waiver to the condition contained in the planning board decision, application for approval of definitive plan Campbell Farm 187 and 199 North End Road dated 9 December 9th, 2019.
Okay, do I have any discussion? Do I have a second?
Let me just make sure I understand her motion. So Lori, you're saying just approve it entirely, not just as to one lot?
Right. And my motion is what the public hearing is about. So I just read what we, what the request was for the modification. So we can either vote to approve the modification and the waiver, or we can vote it down. So the motion is in the affirmative. Okay, so making a positive motion, and because I made it doesn't mean I agree with it. Okay, we need a second, then we can discuss, maybe to clarify what it means. And then we've addressed the issue. Whether we approve it or not, we've addressed the issue that was the purpose of the public hearing.
All right, so I'll second your motion.
Okay, so discussion. I would entertain an amendment to the motion to limit it to only the one lot. And Dana, what lot is the lot in question?
Mr. Chairman, that is on Lot 5.
So I would, I would entertain amending the motion to only, to issue a occupancy permit without a CR for Lot 5.
I'll accept it as a friendly amendment to the motion, if the second will. I will accept.
Do I have any other discussion? All right, let me just add my comments. And my comments are that we had originally put this condition on to ensure that the property retained by the Townsend Hill Realty Trust remains undeveloped and is protected. And that the reason we put this condition down was to maintain leverage. And by amending the, or lessening the permit, just basically gives us less leverage to make sure the CR gets put in place. So if there's any other comments on this? All right, let's do a roll call vote. Lori, how do you vote?
No.
Okay, Lance votes, well, I'll do last, like we always do. Julie?
Julie votes yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosco, no.
Ian?
I vote yes.
Okay, and Lance votes no. And did I miss anyone? Okay, so I tally the vote as three to two, so the amendment, the modified amendment does not pass. Okay?
That's two to three, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon?
Not three to two. Two to three, not three to two.
Correct.
I'm sorry, two to three.
I would just say again, that they do have the opportunity to move their belongings in until this is resolved.
Yeah, that's, that's something that the planning board doesn't control, but I certainly, you know, I did it in my house. So anyway, so with that, I'd like to close the public hearing. So do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second.
Thank you, Julie. Do I, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, and how do you vote, Lori?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosco, yes.
Ian?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and Lance, yes. All right. Um, all right, so we're a little bit behind. So we have a 7:45 appointment. Yes.
May I ask for another vote, please? That you vote to authorize Chairman McNally to sign the decision when ready? There'll have to be a decision.
Adam, help me here. Do we have to, do we have to write up a decision on this?
Of course, yes, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so, so we have a motion, so we, I'll make a motion that does, and we've done this in the past, is it all right that if I sign the decision, that we all don't have to go to Town Hall?
I make a motion that we authorize Chairman to sign the decision for the board as voted.
All right, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, how do you vote, Lori?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosko, yes.
Ian?
Yes.
All right, and Lance votes yes. And Lori, while I go downstairs and reset my modem, would you mind leading the group through the bylaw discussion?
I guess I can do that. Is this the 7:30 with Bill Cattigan?
Yes, yeah, he's going to basically go through a proposed bylaw. It's relatively quick, and I'm just gonna go down and get my internet connection working so I can be more efficient in the meeting, okay?
Okay, happy to do it.
All right, thank you, Lori.
Okay, we are now at 7:50 PM, so sorry, Bill, that this went on a little bit longer than expected.
No problem.
Go for it.
Would you like to screen share? Or just talk about it?
I'll just talk about it, because I don't have the, the thing in front of me here. It would take me a few minutes to set it up. But basically, we had a recent issue with a woman applying for a, a business for dog, dog grooming. And if you look at our, it's in a residential district. So if you look at our residential district special permit uses, there's a section that allows for kennels, veterinary hospitals, doesn't mention dog grooming. Basically, when we wrote this bylaw in the eighties, dog grooming was not a thing. So, well, all I wanna do is add a, add the use, add the words, dog grooming establishment to that, to that phrase in the, in the bylaw.
Okay. Adam, we still have you on. I've often heard a sentence being, just because it's not written does not mean that it's permitted or that it's not permitted. Would that apply here, Adam? Or should there be more description in the bylaw?
So, so you're, you're generally correct. So the, the, the rule of thumb, and it's really more than, no, no more than a rule of thumb, and it depends upon a particular language of, of a, an ordinance or a bylaw, is that when there's a, a section of use regulations or a table of use regulations that identify uses by, by category and then by individual use, and either allows them or disallows them, district by district, or requires a special permit, that any use that is not specified is deemed to be prohibited. And in fact, you have in Townsend a provision to that effect. Now, I'm looking at Section 145-4 of your bylaw, and it says, "Any use not specifically or generically listed herein or otherwise permitted in a district shall be deemed as prohibited." So you've said it very expressly, and that's what I always recommend that bylaws, ordinances and bylaws do, and so that's what you've got. So you, you need to specify a, a use as being allowed. If it's, if the bylaw is silent, then it is considered prohibited.
Would you like me to screen, would you like me to screen share it? If you'd like, it's.
If you can, sure.
Sure, yep. So Hartley, if you could, put it up for the meeting.
Is that the one that's on Main Street?
Yeah, it's 488 or so, way back, way up west.
On Main Street.
Yeah.
So has the zoning, and I mean, you've been on it forever. So has, has zoning ever discussed getting more involved with re-zoning the Main Street areas?
Well, yes, we've, we've talked about, you know, some of us are interested in the, that housing plan that we, we heard about, I don't know, was it a week ago or something? Basically, the, the DHCD, one of my favorite state organizations, is wanting to, wanting us to build some phenomenal amount of multifamily housing, because we are a Mass Bay transportation town. Not directly, but we're one town away from the Mass Bay transportation links. So, so, you know, and, and you and I discussed this after town meeting last year, because with the age restricted housing, the, the bylaw essentially eliminates consideration of small lots. And I was interested in getting the downtown commercial district expanded and, and also permitting smaller lot, age restricted development there, so we could start to create a downtown with actually people living in it. And, and that's like the first step to kind of upgrading the, the whole downtown experience, I believe. But anyway, that's, that's neither here nor there. But we, we've talked about doing that, and we, we'd kinda like to get together with you, you folks on that, that particular issue as well.
Okay, so at this point in time, your presence here tonight is just to try to put where a commercial kennel is, although I don't know why dog grooming wouldn't be considered under commercial kennel. But we need to spell it out.
Yeah, we need to spell it out, because, I mean, I, I, basically, I told the rest of the board that it was close enough for government work, but it, they weren't convinced. So, so anyway, I, I would like to get this fixed. And it's a, you know, dog grooming is a way less intense use than a kennel or an animal hospital. Okay, so I think, I don't think it makes, makes, you know, I don't think it's ever gonna be a nuisance compared to what that's, what's possible with those other uses.
So what do you call, no, I don't have animals. So what do you call a dog trainer? Like, do they have doggy schools?
Well, you know, you can get, yeah, you go to puppy kindergarten, you can go to, you can take your dog to school, but that's always at somebody else's premises. You can hire a private dog trainer who will come to your house and work with your, you and your dog, because you need as much training as the dog typically. So, you know, that's, those are the possibilities with training. I haven't, I mean, we, we do have a, a dog, an overnight and daycare center in New Hampshire that, that offers to train your dog at their site.
But my question is, what I'm trying to get at here is, while we're adding dog grooming, is there something, is there another use that would be allowable that should be included?
Yeah, you're, you're singing my song, Lori. I'm glad I came.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm trying to kill all the birds we can with one stone.
Absolutely.
So can I say dog daycare?
You can add dog training. We might have to flesh it out a little bit more than dog grooming, but.
Is it a?
What about, what about dog daycare?
Do you need a different license? Okay, that was my thing, thought. Do you need a different license to do different things?
Well, yeah, I guess. I mean, I don't know if you need a license to do dog grooming. You have to keep the Board of Health happy, no matter what you're doing with dogs. But I'm not sure that there's a specific, there's, there's kennel licenses, and the state gets involved in that, I think. But.
So the dog grooming is only like for getting a bath and a haircut and stuff like that?
Yeah, I mean, this, this particular lady only does, you know, one dog at a time, basically, so.
But you see, we're changing the bylaw for one person. I'm trying to think of, while we're doing this and presenting it before the town, that do you have, do you already have like a placard on the warrant at the town meeting?
I think I put, I don't know if I have a, I'm trying to just hold the space, that's all.
Okay, that's what I mean.
So it's not, it's not, I mean, I, I wrote it specifically, but it's just a placeholder.
Okay. Well, I don't know.
Sorry, my, my microphone got hit by mistake. Sorry about that.
I don't know, what do you wanna do, Lori? Do you wanna think about it for a couple of days and have people kibbitz about it and then get together again? Or how do you wanna handle it?
Well, however you want. Do you guys wanna talk about it some more and see what you wanna add? I mean, I don't, can I hear from the board members? Can't see anybody right now, but I mean.
This is Julie. I, I'd like to see it a little broader, too.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be a good idea to, to look over for a little bit, since I have a lot of dogs. I understand it takes, it takes a lot just to, just to work with dogs and actually keep everything healthy and, and, yeah, so I wanna, I would like to see all the details and stuff like that.
So, Bill, I think that the board would be agreeable to adding some language there. So if you wanted to, and, and we would be agreeable to adding more than just dog grooming.
Okay.
Since Adam had stated that it's better to be specific, if there are other things that you, and dog owners, whatever, might wanna add to this, that, you know, think about it and come back with like a full thing, and we'll discuss it again.
Great. Will do.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I see you're back. You can take over. We're done with 2.2.
Okay, great. Let me get the agenda up.
And I'm, may I just say, I'm just gonna write down Julie's suggestion of doggy daycare as one of the possibilities. And if there are any other ones right now, I can write them down in a minute.
I think the, the other one, Beth, that I caught would be a dog training.
Okay.
Even though, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you know, I would think that a dog kennel covers doggy daycare as well. I mean, you know, but it's always better to be, to have more than less, if you know what I mean.
Oh, yeah. That's great.
I think Adam felt the same.
Pardon?
I think Adam felt the same way, that it should be classified.
Yeah, okay. That's why he's such a great guy to have with us.
May I ask one more? Since Adam, I don't want Adam to leave, but I didn't receive the markup. If I did, I apologize for the bylaw, the flock tender bylaw. Did you email that to me? Or do you have it prepared for tonight?
Is that addressed to me, Beth?
Yes, through Chairman McNally, please.
Sure, so, so your, your modification is pretty simple. So there wasn't really a whole lot to mark up. It's a couple sentences, so I didn't have any issues with those. I figured I'd be in attendance tonight, and I could address, you know, any questions that might be had. I've got some, some warnings, I guess I would say, about attempting to regulate chickens and roosters and, because I've got experience doing that in other communities. But, but other than that, I don't really have any comments. I had, I had no issue with the language proposed, so long as you understand some of the, the words of caution that I'll, that I'll share when we get there.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want you to go. All right, thank you.
So, so I think we're on, on 3.1, review proposed zoning bylaw amendments. And so, Adam, what are our warnings?
So my, my only, I guess it's really just one caution, but it's somewhat maybe multifaceted. So whenever a municipality attempts to regulate agricultural or farming uses, you've got to be mindful of the protections that are available by state statute. And you've got to be mindful of the protections that are often available in other provisions of law adopted locally at the municipal level, but outside of zoning. And so what I mean by that is really sort of twofold. So on the one hand, under the Zoning Act, Chapter 48, Section 3, and a lot of you already know this, you probably all already know this, Section 3 provides for certain exempt uses. And exempt is probably too strong of a term, because they're not completely zoning exempt, but that's the term that's often used to describe them. And you've all heard of agricultural, educational, religious uses being sort of the, the three prongs of that statute. There are some others. Solar energy systems, interesting reference there. But when you're dealing with educational uses or religious uses or agricultural uses, municipalities, whether it be zoning boards or planning boards, or in some instances, select boards, have a limited authority to regulate those uses. The legislature has determined that those uses are subject to certain protections statewide, regardless of the municipality in which they're located. Now, there are, there are criteria to qualify as any of these things, and they're, the case law is sort of riddled with these organizations that claim to be religious, and yet they're not, but they're seeking the benefit of a zoning exemption, or they claim to offer an, an, an educational component, but they're not really education, and so they don't qualify for the exemption. But generally speaking, the courts have been quite flexible and have been, what's the word I'm looking for? They've been, they've applied these protections very broadly. So you just need to be mindful that in the context of agriculture, if you're on a parcel of two acres or more, and you meet certain minimum thresholds in terms of the sums of money that you're generating, the revenue that you're generating through your operations, and you could, you could be a small scale, you know, quote unquote, "commercial farm" that is, you know, exactly two acres, and you've got $2,500 a year worth of product that you're selling, maybe you've got some small trees that you're, 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 you're growing on site, or maybe you've got some chickens and you're selling eggs. As long as you're meeting that dollar threshold on a, on a, on a parcel as small as two acres, you would qualify for the agricultural exemption. You wouldn't even need to meet any monetary thresholds if you're on a, a parcel of five acres or more. Now, again, we're dealing with commercial agriculture, not, you know, residential agriculture, but, but the courts have been flexible in, in applying that definition. I had a case not too long involving a single-family home, a resident who had resided there for some 15 or 20 years, and he had 50, 59 chickens, I think it was. And I actually presented him. His neighbors supported him 100%. They actually bought eggs off of him. But the, the town was concerned that he had, that he was in violation of the town's bylaw limiting the number of chickens to 14. And so they attempted to enforce that against him. And I said, "You're, you're a right-to-farm community. There's an agricultural exemption. We're on a parcel of more than two acres." And my client was, was, was operating a farm. He, he was selling all sorts of agricultural materials from property, and the, the town backed off pretty quickly, because they knew that their enforcement were, were very limited. So I would just, that's sort of my first word of caution, is just be mindful that you may have property owners who can try and avoid the, the provisions of this bylaw by claiming that they're entitled to that agricultural exemption. My second sort of related comment is that, my understanding, and I guess I should have checked this before tonight's meeting, although I've, I've, I've heard it said several times, I believe you have a right I believe you have a right to farm bylaw in, in Townsend. I'm looking for it here. If you're a right to farm community, then that also extends to residents, businesses, some additional protection that might not otherwise exist. It recognizes that there is a, a, a sort of a, a, an accepted right to conduct farming activities even outside of the zoning context. And in fact, I did find that it's chapter 34 of your bylaws. So chapter 34, it follows sort of the standard. I can, I can see it immediately as I look at it. It follows the standard form of a right to farm bylaw that was provided by the state under state statute. The purpose of the bylaw is to state with emphasis the right to farm accorded to all citizens of the Commonwealth under the state constitution, state statutes and regulations. And then it goes on to define farm and farming and agriculture very broadly to include not only commercial agriculture, but also anything accessory to commercial agriculture. So again, I don't, I don't say this to indicate that the bylaw as you propose it is faulty in any way. You just need to be generally mindful that you've got this protection in your bylaw and somebody who is seeking to keep more chickens than you are limiting them to. If they can establish that they are a farm or a farming operation or agricultural in nature, at least with some commercial component, then they would be able to potentially circumvent these provisions. And that's, that's, those are my words of caution.
But, but Adam, if, if I play this back, you're saying that it would apply to someone that, that someone that had two acres or more of property and also had agricultural revenue would be exempt from this?
So there, there's, there's essentially three categories of individuals that can be exempt. There's, there's two exemptions. There's the exemption under the zoning act, and then there's the protections offered more generally by your right to farm bylaw. Under the zoning act, there's, under the zoning act, there's two categories. There is two acres or more with certain, certain minimum revenue. And there's a second category that doesn't have any sort of, sort of minimum revenue, but it requires a parcel of five acres or more. So those are the two categories under zoning. But then separate and apart from zoning, you have the protections under the right to farm bylaw. Now, again, in all three of these categories, we're dealing with commercial agriculture. So somebody who's just keeping a few chickens on site, and, and they're, they're keeping the eggs for themselves or for their fam, for their, for their family or their friends, that's one thing. But it's different if you're, if you're selling the product, even, even if you're not making. You know, you think farm and you think a farming operation that's, that's in the six figures, you know, in terms of the, the revenue that's being generated on an annual basis. You can generate as little as $2,500 and be considered a farm.
Okay.
Chairman McNally, would you like me to screen share? Would you like me to screen share the amendment?
Sure. Has Hartley granted you screen sharing ability?
Yeah. Can you see that? Sorry, I don't know what this is. Just so the board knows, sorry, I just wanted to add this in. I noticed this while I was doing the minutes, that I was distracted. But you had asked for 50 feet distance from an abutting residential dwelling. Abutting was the word I missed. So I just wanted the board to know that I did catch that while doing the minutes. Because I believe the sentiment was you didn't want that the, the coop to be 50 feet from the flock tender's residence, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, I seem to recall when this originally came up, which was some time ago. The issue was, let me just call it free ranging chickens. And I believe it was on Highland Street where one property, one owner's chickens were basically on another owner's property all the time. And that the building commissioner at the time felt that the bylaw was not, was too vague, that it was not enforceable for people to keep their chickens on their own property. I think that's how this originally came about. So Adam. I hear what you're saying. I'm trying to think practically, I mean, practically, what would be your recommendation? Would your recommendation to be, if you put something in place, be very careful of its enforcement? Or, you know, don't even bother?
So my, my recommendation is certainly not that you shouldn't bother. As I said, I've, I've got no issue with the language as, as proposed here. I'm just offering a warning and, and, you know, to sort of liken my advice, and maybe I'm giving myself too much credit, but to liken my advice to the advice that, that municipalities get from the Attorney General on an annual basis. When you, when you adopt bylaws, zoning and general bylaws at town meeting, all towns are required to submit those bylaws to the Attorney General for review. And what we often see, occasionally, the Attorney General will respond and say, good to go. Nice job. But typically, what the Attorney General says is they send back, you know, for two or three different warrant articles, they'll send back three, four, five, six pages of text. It says, well, this looks okay, but be warned of the following. And then they, they, they sort of cover themselves by giving you all the warnings associated with what you're about to do. So, you know, you've adopted a new, let's say, to, 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 to address a topic that was just discussed a moment ago, you, you adopted a new nuisance animals bylaw that is, is regulating, you know, dangerous dogs and nuisance dogs, and maybe even addresses kenneling. And they'll offer you two or three pages saying, well, this is all well and good, but be mindful that there is, there are significant state statutes that address this area as well. And you can't enforce your bylaw in a manner that would be contrary to the minimum requirements of state statute. And number two, be mindful that there's a licensing process that's separate and apart from zoning. So any applicant would also be subject to state licensing. So they're giving you all the cautions, not saying, and then ultimately they approve the bylaw as written. So that's all that I'm offering here. I'm saying this is okay as is. Just be mindful that you may get claims of agricultural protection, and then you're going to find yourself in a, a bit of a pickle in terms of, you know, how you go about trying to enforce.
Yeah. Okay. So Beth, in our last meeting, didn't we, I, I believe, and I believe that we, we voted on this bylaw?
Is that what's in the minutes? I think that, okay. Yeah. Been doing a lot of work here for the CBA and. So that's, I, I remember vote for, yeah, in, in favor of this. But I'm, you know, my notation with the abutting, which I added, you asked for town council review. So at this point, you're ready to go ahead and hold a public hearing? I, I would just verify in the minutes that you voted because I don't have a great recollection of this part of it, that meeting, because I was busy.
I mean, why don't we do something very quick? I mean, you've screen shared it. Do I have a motion to move forward with this proposed amendment?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the proposed amendment.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Lance.
Okay, Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
Did we lose Ian?
No, I'm here.
Okay, Ian?
Yes.
And Lance is yes. All right, so if we voted before, we just both voted, Beth.
Thank you. And we need to set the date for the public hearing.
Okay, so when do we need to have? Do we need to do this at our next planning board meeting, or can it go to the first one in March?
The public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need, I'll need time to publish and post and notify. So it's, it's a zoning bylaw. I would give it. I mean, you don't, you don't have to do it, you know, you could, you could do it in March or the end of March or wherever. It's not a substantive change. So I don't anticipate.
Why don't we just schedule it then for our March, the 14th meeting?
Okay, I just want to make sure that's enough time. I didn't check.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I? Can I ask you to delay that a little bit? So, because we're working on this dog grooming issue and possibly some age restricted housing issues. And it would, it's way more cost effective to have one public hearing than it is to have.
I, I agree 100% Bill.
Okay.
So when's our drop dead date, Beth?
Oh, for the public hearing? Well, it's, what are the, a couple of weeks before town meeting. And you could have it as late as what Adam, if I may, through Chairman McNally, what is the last drop dead date that the planning board could have a public hearing of an article to go before?
The night of town meeting.
I thought it was, right, okay. So I mean, I don't recommend that. I'd say, you know, a couple of weeks before. So town meeting's third, right? Isn't it? Am I right there, May 3rd? So, so, yeah, we're going back. Let's go, I would recommend, you know, two weeks before that. Three? It's up to the board.
How about three weeks before? So do you, why don't you just pick a date in April? What, when's our planning board meetings in April?
Let me double check. One moment. Should have that. So we're looking at March, April. Okay, April is, we have, yeah, that's a good question. How did we do the April planning board dates? Because the election, the town election is the 25th. I'm not at work, I'm sorry. I usually have everything right. Mike, can you check?
Beth, I have, I have the 11th. Sorry.
You have the 11th?
I have the 11th and the 25th.
Oh, we do have the 25th, okay. So.
Why don't we do it on the 11th?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Is that good for you, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, it's Monday, the 11th. Sounds good.
All right. Beth, I can confirm the 11th is on your calendar.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. All right, so April 11th during the planning board meeting. And I'll go ahead and put, I'll get a warrant article to the town administrator for this amendment and for the dog grooming amendment as a placeholder. This one, you know, they'll both be on the warrant, if that's okay with the board. I'll move this to the warrant.
Okay. All right. All right, 3.3 Townsend Housing Production Plan, vote to approve. First of all, I'd like to make a comment that I thought the housing production plan was very well written. I enjoyed reading it. I hope everyone else did.
I did.
Are there any, any questions or discussion on the Townsend Housing Production Plan before we put in our vote for support? So I'm not going to have a, a motion to approve the Townsend Production Plan from the planning board?
If I may, there, Lori, there was a, Jody Deschain sent me a motion that you used for the housing authority. Do you want me to read that one? Or do you have, do you just want to make up your own? Okay, let me, let me grab that.
The board and they can make up their mind?
Yeah. Okay, so this is what, so it's, it's specifically referenced, basically, the Townsend Housing Authority voted the approval of the Townsend Housing Production Plan fiscal year 2022 through 2026. And that was the, basically, the motion. So I just thought that would be helpful. Jody sent that to me.
Can I have a board member make that motion? Yes, Lori.
You would make the motion, I mean, I can make the motion if you want, that the planning board approve the 2022 to 2026 housing production plan as presented from the town, as presented to us by the Townsend Housing Authority.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I second the motion.
All right, how do you vote, Lori? I mean, Julie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Verasco, yes.
Okay, Lance votes yes. All right, on 3.4, which is the final Townsend Master Plan, I've been spending quite a bit of time looking at it. And I wanted to come up with the following proposal to present to the board. So I believe that we still need to go through, I would like to go through a review, a second review with the planning board members. I know that I have several selection that are willing to review and provide comments to us. And third, I would like to run it through the appropriate department that it's targeting to see if they have any comments on it. And so then I will go ahead and take the initiative to put it together or any changes that we have. One thing that I would highly suggest is that everyone reads three parts of the appendices. The first part that I think is very valuable is to read the comments from the the meetings that the master plan committee had with our citizens. Even though it's dated to 2018 timeframe, I still think that the focus groups or the groups of citizens that came together at the senior center, at the high school or what have you, have some very, very good insight. You know, especially since one of the problems identified was our pothole problem. Second, I would encourage you to read the economic development that the master plan committee had contracted an outside organization to do. I think it provides some good insights from someone removed from the town in terms of our economic development. And then third, to review the survey results from the citizens. And believe it or not, that's quite a bit of reading, just those three pieces there. And then what I will do is I will have for our next meeting, and maybe even beforehand, I wanted to put together a draft schedule on how to get this done because I know it impacts us on grants and what have you. And then I'll just, we'll do it chapter by chapter by chapter, and we may have to have some work sessions independent from our meetings. So that's my sort of thoughts about how to put this master plan on the dump pile. Any comments? Okay. Well, I will.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
Okay, I was, I was reading the, the master plan today, and it badly needs to be proofread because there's a lot of grammatical mistakes and misspellings and stuff like that. And I, I don't know how important that is to you, but it.
To be candid with you, Bill, it's very important to me, but because it speaks of the professionalism of the document.
Yeah. I don't know if it's worth trying to hire somebody to, to do that proofreading.
Well, Bill, have you seen the latest one? Because Beth, in a lot of the meetings that we had, Beth, weren't you editing it? Or sending Ken the edits that we were making?
Yes, but the final edits were made by the master plan committee on December 3rd, and that's the last meeting that they held. So they made all of the edits and sent us the final. And they are no longer meeting. So what we have is everything that came out of our meetings and their meetings.
Okay. Okay. And we all have that final version, or it's up in the cloud somewhere?
You do, yes.
I was done, okay.
Beth, Beth just sent it out today, so I was looking, I assume I have the latest version.
Yes, you do.
I would also be happy to participate if you want somebody else to, in a work session or whatever, whatever you want. I could, I could put some time in on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before you proceed with your agenda, I just want to bow out. I don't think you needed me for anything further on the agenda tonight, but didn't want to leave without saying goodbye.
Bye, Adam. I think he, he's having technical difficulties again. Thank you on his behalf.
Sure, sure. Thank you all. See you soon.
Take care.
I also am going to step away, but I'm going to follow up tomorrow and see how the rest of this meeting went. It's just a little late. So I, I've got a bit of a drive back, but thank you all so much for staying up late on Valentine's Day and doing this work.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm going to take off as well. So Beth, just let me know if there's something I should work session or something I should go.
Oh, thank you, Bill. Thank you very much. I swear will.
Have a good night.
Have a great night. Thank you. Yeah, it looks like Lance has had technical difficulties again. Okay.
Do you want to continue on the?
Agenda? Want me to put the agenda up for?
It's, the next one is. Well, 3.4 was the final master plan, which we just covered. 3.5 is Monticujuset Regional Planning, excuse me, Regional Transportation Commission update.
Okay. Yeah, I just confirm with the board that the letter was submitted to RPC for the request that the board voted on in the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen. I believe the letter, if you, if you look in the folder, there's a copy of the letter that was endorsed by the Board of Selectmen and sent to MRPC. So we, our project proposal is, is submitted. And I think that's all on that one for now. And we'll be waiting, you know, to hear a response on that. That's all we have on that.
Okay. And then I think. Okay, so Town Council already gave us, oh, excuse me, 3.6 Monticujuset Regional Planning Commission update. Oh, that's me. I really don't know anything.
Okay.
Actually a little foggy right now. 3.7 Review Town Council Comments Re the Presidential District Follow Law Draft Amendment, which we've done. About the follow. Okay. And 3.8 Safe Roots to Schools. That's General A. Carroll. So we go to the next meeting for that. 3.9 Townsend Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness and Hazard Mitigation Plan Implementation.
Hi, this is Lance. I'm back, I'm back Lori, but why don't you? I apologize, but Bill, I will, I will clean up the proofreading stuff, okay?
Okay, Bill's gone.
Oh, he left?
Yeah.
And, yeah.
But he did offer, you know, to, I'll update him on whatever. He said he'd be happy to help with any work sessions or that. So.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I was, I was going to have my wife do the proofreading because I, you know, I'm from an engineering background and so it's probably better for some of the more English classes than I did.
That'd be great.
Next is, unless, Beth, do you have anything on 3.9? That's where we were Lance, 3.9.
Okay. Why don't you just keep going Lori?
Yeah, there's no update on that.
I'll finish this. 3.10 Annual Town Election Monday, April 25th. Okay, we're just keeping this on here. Because of wanting it on to keep in front of everybody's mind. I believe there's still time to take out papers. And again, if anybody on the board or out there who's running for planning board needs some help, I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Go ahead Lance.
Um, why don't you continue? Because this. All right, notice from towns, towns and other towns, Beth?
Okay, there's quite a bit in the folder here. So did you, how did you want to do it? I did not get a summary done. So there's, there's quite a few that came in. Do you want, there's, there's correspondence from Townsend and then there's. Yeah. Would you want me to just go through it?
Yeah, try to go through it as fast as you can. Probably more emphasis on Townsend than other towns.
All right, we'll go to the Townsend stuff, the Townsend notices first. Well, this one, the board, I sent to the board already. It's the planning board legal notice of public hearing for us for the board on March 14th. And it is for a, it's 32 Main Street. And it is a, to open and operate a food truck park, providing food services accompanied by mobile food trucks for takeout and sit down picnic style eating.
Where is 32 Main Street?
That is right across from 29 Main Street. It's, it's down near, down near the Harbor Mall.
Is that the one next to the Squonacook RI? Right to the right of it, I think?
Yes, right next to the realty. I think it used to be a watch repair truck.
I know exactly where it is.
Yeah, I got my watch repaired there years ago.
Oh, okay. I know where it is then. Okay.
Yep. So that's all we can say about that, but the public hearing has been scheduled. The zoning board of appeals has issued notice of decision and a decision regarding 8 Jeff Street. You may recall, there, there was a request for an appeal of the building commissioner's decision and the appeal. Basically, they the, they did, the ZBA overruled the decision of the building commissioner. So that property is now operating under the original special permit at 8 Jeff Street.
Wow, that surprised me.
So the, this has already been up for discussion, but the zoning board of appeals will be holding a public hearing for a special permit for 78 Main Street. For a dog kennel, like a special permit for a dog kennel. And that is, that what is going on there is the continuation for the dog, the original application, there's a continuation that will be held that night. And depending on whether or not the applicant withdraws that application, she has reapplied under the dog kennel license, I'm sorry, dog kennel by law as a permitted business in a residential district. So that is on the 23rd. That's going to be, let's go quickly through here. Sorry. So again, on the 23rd, the Townsend zoning board of appeals has another hearing for 241 to 247 Main Street. And that is the three, the three story building where the applicants are proposing to convert a building into mixed use by adding two, I'm sorry, four two bedroom apartments and two one bedroom apartments to the second and third floor of the pre-existing non-conform commercial structure at 241 Main Street. That public hearing is on February 23rd at 6:45. And thank you for your patience. We did, the board received a notice of decision from the Historic District Commission. And this is work done at 478 Main Street. The work was done prior to submitting an application for a certificate of appropriateness. The Historic District Commission did rule that no certificate will be issued. The comment is the work done was not approved as appropriate by majority vote of the commission. And the certificate has been denied. And I think that's where we're at for Townsend notices. And then the town of Groton is holding a planning board public hearing Thursday, February 24th at 7:00 PM. They're considering amendments to their zoning bylaw. And their proposed amendments would bring the town's marijuana zoning bylaw in compliance with state law and state regulations relative to distance between various establishments. Again, that's February 24th. The town of Pepperell Planning Board has a notice of public hearing for a special permit to allow the installation of a temporary non-illuminated real estate sale sign at a development. The town of Lunenburg Planning Board has issued a notice of decision. And that is for an application for five lots to create a lot for the existing residents at 422 Mopous Road. And they held that public hearing on December 13. They're just issuing the decision. The town of Groton issued a notice of decision for a special permit, which was granted for 45th Street for a detached accessory apartment. And the town of Shirley Planning Board is issuing a notice of public hearing for February 23rd. And it's an application for a special permit slash request for public hearing to seek relief from the protective zoning bylaw relating to a use. And the parcel is located at 65 Front Street. And it does not say what the change of use is. That's it for correspondence from Townsend and other towns.
Oh, you did a great job, Beth. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, 4.2, so MRPC and we have a March 1st deadline for anything for DLTA. So do we have anything that we're planning to put forth for that?
If I may speak to this, I did reach out to Karen Chapman and I asked her, I know she spoke in her last presentation about money available for the MBTA work. So I did get an example letter if, if the board wants me to screen share it. I do think it's something you probably want to have some discussion on and some agreement on tonight, considering March 1st is, is the deadline. So let me pull that letter up. It's just an example of what another town has done for the situation. I don't have any other ideas. Now, I don't know if Shirley is a MBTA adjacent community or whether it's a actual MBTA on the service line community. I don't know if anyone remembers. Do they, are they serviced by MBTA direct? Okay, so they're going to be a little different. They're going to be asking for, you know, probably more than we need to, but.
Yeah, because the commuter rail goes, makes a stop in Air, Shirley and Pittsburgh.
Okay.
So like Lunenburg is adjacent, like us.
Okay. So I'm not sure, this is just an example. I, I don't know if you want to draft a letter or if you want me to ask Mike to draft a letter or something more tailored to what Townsend needs, but this is the suggestion, you know, that this is what Shirley.
That's an excellent suggestion. What do you think, Mike?
Oh, Mike's left. Yeah, Mike's left. I can read it if you want. Basically, I'm writing to inform you the Shirley Board of Selectmen voted on February 7th to pursue the use of DLTA program through the Monticujuset Regional Planning Commission to provide technical assistance in the parentheses MBTA communities unparentheses category. The item is to assess the newly enacted legislation to address multifamily zoning requirements for MBTA communities. The town of Shirley expects increased development over the next 10 years. The location of a train station in the town of Shirley places the community in the 15% required multifamily housing category for MBTA communities. The DLTA will assist the town with how to comply with the regs. Enacted as part of the Economic Development Bill in January 2021, new section 3A of MGL, Chapter 40A, the zoning act, requires that an MBTA community shall have at least one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right and these other criteria set forth in the statute. Bullet points, a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. Another bullet point, not more than one half miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable. Another bullet, no age restriction. Another bullet, suitable for families with children. So this is a letter, as I said, an example of what Shirley has already submitted for their DLTA project proposal or their, their response to the call for proposals, if you will.
I think that's, that's an excellent idea and that we could just, you know, really leverage that letter just with a few minor modifications, like for example, you know, being located near a train station isn't required. And because we are adjacent, the densities are low requirement. So those are the modifications that I can think of.
Okay. Yep. And I can go over that with Mike.
I think it would be a good idea if, ask Mike if he could, you know, if it would be appropriate, if he has, has, can put that together.
Okay, absolutely. All right.
And then we could vote on it at our next planning board meeting.
Well, the next planning board meeting is, what is the date?
The 28th, right?
The 28th. So we're getting too close to the deadline. So I would recommend that you make a vote based on, I mean, you can make the amendments in your motion, but what has to happen is the letter will have to be drafted and the Board of Selectmen will have to sign it. And then it will have to be submitted and March 1st is the deadline at midnight.
Okay. Well, I don't think the Selectmen are meeting. Gosh, I don't think the Selectmen are meeting until March the 1st.
Well, they're meeting tomorrow. That's right. And there's no way they could, well, I don't know if they can get it on tomorrow.
They had, they had work sessions in between though, too.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So why don't we have Mike do it and then we can just have like a quick planning board work session meeting? That probably will tag along with the master plan work. How's that?
And I don't even know if it needs a master, a planning board vote. I mean.
You know what? I, I, I don't think it really needs a planning board vote.
Okay.
Or I mean, if we want to be safe, we could just basically make the motion that we have our, we have Mike just basically draft something to the effect that Shirley did for submission to the Selectmen for approval.
Okay, with the appropriate review.
And is there a second to that motion I just made?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, I'll second it and I'll, I'll speak to it if you allow.
Yes, please.
Okay, so this letter is standard. It's a letter that repeats the law. And in our case, rather than being, you know, in, in that area, I forget again what it's called, the community, we're, we're adjacent. So versus being right in it, the term would just change to adjacent. I don't, and, and it would be good if Mike just would maybe go with the minimum of what we could do because obviously we are not in the half a mile from.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I think that if I remember right, the densities are different.
Yep.
Yeah, so he, he'll be to change that for what we are.
Exactly. Yeah, agreed.
Yeah, based on what Karen talked about in her presentation last meeting. And, and yeah, we'll double check with Karen before, you know, we submit anything because she's, she knows all the stats for Townsend too.
Yeah, and I think you did an excellent job of capturing it in the minutes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Thanks. Okay. Super.
So do I have a, do we have a second to Lori's motion?
No, you made the mo.
Okay. Do we have a second to my motion then?
Lori, you're on mute. Sorry. I did, I seconded.
Oh, okay. Julie, how do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Lori? Lori?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosco, yes.
Lance, yes. Okay.
Fantastic.
All right, and then I think we just have one, I gotta, my glasses, I dropped my glasses.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's fine. We've already covered 4.3.
Okay, so motion to, yes, we did. So then can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Good. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, Julie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes.
Mike?
Mike Barosco, yes.
And Lance, yes. Okay, thank you, everyone, and have a wonderful, what's left of our Valentine's Day, okay?
Thank you.
All right, have a good one, guys.